Good evening. Welcome back from open session, from closed session. Let you all to know that we have Board Member Kim Erby join us by phone. And I would like to call on Board Member Napper for the prayer. I'm sorry, for the pledge. I guess I thought I was in church for a second there. We are now at the public comment. And I was like for the following to come up. And that, and the order is John Martin followed by Dan Arkin. And please remember you have three minutes to speak. And the amber light will go off at one minute. Pardon me?
And then when there's fifteen seconds.
Fifteen seconds.
You said thirty minutes or thirty?
No, you had three minutes.
Man, when you've been doing this for so long, you can make cheesy jokes, right?
That's right. Thank you.
Good, good evening Guilford County School Board Members. My name is John Martin. I am a Lindley Elementary School parent and I'm a neighbor. I've been hanging out with you all for too long. I think it's been like a year. Maybe I come here to hang out with Alan Scherels and crew, but I'm just joking. I'm happy to be here speaking about Lindley. We, we've been talking about this for, I feel like it's about a year. And obviously, I believe that preservation is an important part of the character of the school and contributes to the education of the children there. We had, there was a, I thought, a fantastic community engagement meeting on July 10th at Lindley. It was well attended. And I think the message was pretty clear that there is interest, significant interest to save the historical character of that building. And then one theme that came from that was saving the historical facade. Guilford County Commissioner Kay Cashin, who is a supporter of this approach, suggested that I bring some pictures of the building so that maybe some can see it. So I did that. So for those of you all that have not seen it, this is the front of Lindley Elementary. You might have seen it, but I'm gonna show you a blow up. There's a, Kay again said, are those books above the windows? And I said, yeah, they actually are. So there's some neat elements of the facade that I think are worthy keeping. And last but not least, here's the door where our Principal, Mr. Smith, stands every day when they welcome students. So that's the facade we're talking about. And it's just the front. And that's our, that's our request here today. I did also, I couldn't help myself, but I brought the PTA, which has nothing to do with any advocacy for any architectural initiatives also. This is their shirt this year. So there is some emotional significance for what we're talking about here. So our, our request is very simple, to make a substitute motion to save just the facade. We think this is a win-win, to take into account the cost and the, and the design considerations that we understand Guilford County Schools prioritizes. So with that, I'll just say thank you. I believe there's some other speakers from the floor that are in the neighborhood and also the schools as well. Thanks again.
Thank you. Diane Arkin followed by Zidi Nemaia.
Hi, I'm Diane Arkin. I know some of you and it's good to see you again. I live at 635 Scott Avenue. And I am here to speak about Lindley Elementary School. I spent my professional life as a community planner. Retired now from the city of Greensboro after 20 years. So I feel like I understand the challenges faced by the staff and the staff of Guilford County Schools as they develop a strategy for replacing a much-loved community institution with a campus that will provide future students the best chance for a successful education and that will attract and retain the very best educators. We all want that. I appreciate their willingness to build relationships with the community members and to listen to our voices and invite us to be a part of finding a path forward for Lindley Elementary School. I also want to extend my appreciation to the members of the Board of Education who take time, they could be spending with their own families and their own friends to do this really important work. So in an effort not to repeat what others have said, although being second, not many have spoken before me or will say this evening, I'm not going to spend time offering reasons to preserve the existing school. Personally, I'm a big fan of preservation in my professional life. I've never torn down a building I didn't regret quite a bit. And I've never saved one that I didn't, I wasn't glad I saved. So, but, but I do, I know it's a complicated decision. And I trust that Guilford County Schools staff and your consultants will do your best to come up with a plan that serves the needs of the Guilford County students and faculty as well as of the residents of the neighborhood. I've lived a block away from Lindley Elementary School for 30 years. The kids that walked by my house those first years are now grown, many with families of their own. I know that many have moved on, but that some have chosen to remain in Lindley Park. Those that chose to stay or to return probably did so for the very same reasons that I'm still there. The rich history, the variety of the architecture, the mature trees and landscaping, the proximity to parks, shops and restaurants, and the interesting and diverse community of people who live there. Lindley Park is a neighborhood that has proved its value to the residents and to the greater city of Greensboro and deserves a thoughtful and considered approach to growth. Whatever is decided here this evening, I hope the Board, Guilford County Schools staff and their consultants are committed to continuing in partnership with the community to design a school that maintains the integrity of the built environment of the Lindley Park neighborhood. I'd like to just finish up by asking everybody who's here regarding the Lindley School to just raise their hand or stand up for a second. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration. We all appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Zidi Momalo and I'm the new president of the Guilford Education Alliance. I am truly honored to be here in front of all of you for a lot of different reasons. Chief among them, the fact that I am a Guilford County Schools graduate. I went to both Peeler and Irwin Elementary Schools. I went to Acoch Middle School before it became Swan. And this past weekend, I got to celebrate my 25th high school reunion with my brothers and sisters from James Benson Dudley Senior High. And so, yes. And so I'm here not only on behalf of myself and my daughter Zuri, but on behalf of my very classmates. Guilford Education Alliance has been around for 20 years. In fact, we'll be celebrating our 20-year anniversary this year. We work to build alliances as our name would dictate. And we do that in a number of different ways. One of which is through our teacher supply warehouse. We opened up the warehouse last week. Annually, we are able to serve over 3,000 Guilford County Schools educators by providing them with much-needed school supplies. And we're able to distribute over $600,000 of school supplies annually. We are in partnership with both Cone Health and Guilford County Schools on a school-based telehealth program. We now have 16 sites where we're able to provide health care to students in our most vulnerable populations. And we have already been able to see an impact on absenteeism as well as challenging behaviors. And so we look to see expansion there as well. We know that education is everyone's business. And education is certainly an economic driver. We want to be able to have safe and healthy schools for our students, for all of our students, so that we can retain them after graduation and they can contribute back to our economy in different roles, like me and like Superintendent Oakley. We'd love to see more students getting careers and having jobs within Guilford County. In 2019, the facilities master plan revealed that there were a lot of deficiencies within our schools. Air conditioning and heat that isn't working, which as you know, can make it extremely difficult for students to learn. If Lindley were to build a new construction as opposed to renovating the existing facility, there would be a savings of about $18 million. And that leaves me with the question of who else could benefit from that $18 million savings if we made that efficient and innovative decision? We have so much respect for the work that you all put in making these really, really difficult decisions. And we thank you for the time and efforts that you put into these types of decisions. Again, we want to make sure that we're equitable in the way that we're distributing resources. And $18 million could do quite a lot to serve the most vulnerable among us. Thank you again for your efforts and for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next we have Caroline Boone. Amelia Maddox, I'm sorry, followed by Caroline Boone.
Hello, my name is Amelia Maddox. My pronouns are she/her. Thank you to the School Board for allowing our community to come and speak with you today. I've been a resident of Lindley Park for 20 years. I've been a parent of students at Lindley Elementary since 2016. I have two students, two children, who have graduated from Lindley. And I have a current rising third grader. I'd like to thank Guilford County Schools for their diligence in putting together the cost projections and facilities reports for both the rebuild option and the renovation. I'd like to specifically thank Dr. Monk for the detailed work on this report. I'm also a professor of public health education at UNCG. So I understand how our built environment contributes to our health. I speak today on behalf of current Lindley families, staff and community members in support of the superintendent's recommendation for a full rebuild of Lindley Elementary. We love our school. And I've had the honor and pleasure of volunteering within the classrooms, library and auditorium. And I understand the challenges that come with working in that space and its inequities. And our school's legacy is not built on its bricks. And its culture is not sustained by its facade. Our school's heritage is in its people. The faculty and staff who served the Lindley Institution to educate the children that learn there and the families who support that mission. In addition, our school's legacy is in its PTA and its volunteers. A collaborative community organization that has provided school supplies, field trips and support for all of Lindley's diverse student population. A population that is not adequately served by the current building, nor represented by its origins. The facilities report makes it clear to me that the rebuild option is the most economical option, preserving more funding for other projects in Guilford County Schools. It allows for the most flexibility in design to accommodate inclusivity and special needs, transportation, traffic and best use of the current property. The ongoing maintenance costs of preservation limits future improvements as required by the changing needs of our community. We can rebuild a more energy-efficient building that everyone can be proud of, even incorporating design elements of the old building. I'm excited by the possibilities available in a new build and would urge the Board to consider the benefits presented in a rebuild option as best fulfilling our mandate to our students and our teachers to provide them with the best possible environment within which to teach and to learn. Its savings and opportunity far outweigh the cost and nostalgia of a renovation. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Caroline Boone and I am a Lindley alumni. And I'm currently a rising senior at the nation's number one high school, the Early College Guilford. And I am also a member of the Lindley Park Neighborhood Association because I live like four or five houses down from Lindley. And I have been chosen to make a statement on behalf of the LPNA. The Lindley Park Neighborhood Association, LPNA Executive Board, acting in the best interests of the Lindley Park community, has approved the following statement. Lindley Park, like most older neighborhoods, derives its unique character from a mix of architectural styles, streetscapes and mature trees. Elements that create a sense of place and identity. Lindley Elementary School's 1928 Charles Hartman-designed building is a significant component of the collective memory of our neighborhood. It serves as a tangible link to the past, telling our story by reflecting the architectural styles, cultural norms and societal values of its time. Without preservation efforts, we risk losing these valuable connections to our heritage. We understand the need to move forward on this project quickly. And we respectfully request that Guilford County Schools and the Board of Education ask the design team to consider whether the front facade of the 1928 structure on Camden Street can be stabilized and preserved while allowing for demolition and new construction of the remainder of the school. This solution maintains the building's architectural ties to the surrounding neighborhood and ensures that future Lindley Elementary students will experience the same sense of pride and attachment to the community that surrounding residents have felt towards the school for the past 96 years. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Pat Tillman followed by Colleen Batsey.
Good evening. Pat Tillman, 105 Homewood Avenue and proud supporter of public education. Greetings, Madam Vice Chair, Madam Superintendent, members of the Board. It's been a minute since I've had the fortune of being here with you and to the staff. Good evening to you as well. In fact, it's been so long I had to use a much larger font this time when I typed this. You know, what you do every day, Board Members, Superintendent and the staff here is a debt we can never fully repay. So thank you for all, what you do for our students and our families, our staff every day. I come before you tonight as an engaged member of the community and one that represents District 3. I don't envy your responsibilities, especially in times like, like, like we are in now. But I have a keen understanding of the great significance of what you do. I've also learned through time and hard lessons, that's one kind of wisdom I've heard say, that when there's a growing concern or any conflict or when values collide, how important it is to weigh all of the facts, to listen to those voices and inputs and information. And when we have an issue, as we do before you tonight on your action items before us as a community, as an elected official, there comes a time, as you know, where one must take themselves out of it to see beyond the problem. Take your own personal feelings, your thoughts and listen to the people. The same people that helped get their children up every morning, early at an elementary school, to get them ready for the bus or to walk over to Lindley or into the car. And it's the same people that voted for the historic bonds that are fueling this very effort for our building of new schools and our discussion this evening. In essence, footing the bill, allowing us to be able to remodel, rebuild and reimagine education. I'm simply humbly asking tonight, as you as a governing body, to honor the ground swell of citizens that want, that what I call a win-win. Win-wins are in short supply. But I truly, this is an opportunity that we have this, before us this evening. And that is to maintain some of the architectural integrity and beauty of Lindley Elementary while still building a new school that has the capacity and will support learning and all the curriculum to make and produce fantastic students in this county. I'm asking for a little creativity and to do what other school systems, even, even our own North Carolina A&amp;T has done in the past. And there are other examples I'm sure folks are gonna mention tonight. I'm not asking to create a new precedent. I don't think we are as a group. Or to wade into uncharted waters that can be cost prohibitive. And it's not an either/or, as one of the speakers made reference to. We can do all those things that we want to do. It's an and too. And there are subject matter experts in the field that have said it can be done for a fraction of that $20 million price tag. Let's do this together and create a legacy that will live far beyond us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Carla Massey. I reside at 110 Hammond Avenue. And I come before you to speak on behalf of the students, the families and the staff of Irwin Montessori. I have served the Guilford County community for 15 years as a teacher. Throughout my teaching career, I have taught in, taught in schools in New York, Randolph County, Simpkins and now Irwin Montessori. I've seen buildings, old and new. We occupied this space on Bessemer Avenue that was built around 1917. While this building served us well, there were several deficiencies that we dealt with over the years. I had a classroom that had no heat for years. I had a, their entire wings that come a rainy day, we knew we would see buckets out. We knew not to leave lunchboxes out for the fear of what we would see come lunchtime. The technology that we had access to was subpar for that day and time. The options that our students have for recess mirror what neighborhood curb parks in the 60s and 70s had. Two metal structures for the kids to climb on. I remember the day when we finally got a gravel walking track. It was one of the happiest we had had. Through these deficiencies and inequities, we managed to make these spaces home. Beautiful gardens and zen spaces. In the words of Michael Logan, Irwin Montessori, oops, sorry. Irwin Montessori on Bessemer Avenue had a feel. This feel, this heartbeat, doesn't come from the building itself, but in the love that the community pours into it. Now I live off of the Random Men Corridor and I see the beautiful buildings being built up out of the ground. And it makes me hope for the days that Irwin Montessori gets to step into one of our very own spaces. A space that not only we can make our own, but one that is meant and designed for us. Over the past year, I've heard how badly the Lindley community wants to, doesn't want a new space because of the fear that a new building would impact their community and detract from the historical charm. Irwin has not had a space in six years. Irwin is resilient and will make ways out of no way. But I feel it is time that we shouldn't have to. One thing I can say about the Irwin community is that we leave things better than we found it. Alamance is being left with flower beds, outside benches and a peace pole that were installed by former Irwin students working on their Eagle Ranks as Boy Scouts. There is even a kindness bench in the foyer. While our, while Wiley Archer and several other older buildings have deficiencies that have developed from years of neglect, GCS is working hard to mitigate and fix them. However, I feel as if time and money could be better spent rebuilding the Archer location as opposed to renovating. Every, everyone who has done any kind of renovation on their homes knows that unforeseen issues can pop up anywhere and create additional price tags that were not expected. I have been a part of the preparation of Wiley as a swing space and a number of orders that have popped up are unexpected. I believe the staff, students, families and the community of Irwin deserve a space, not just to call their own, but as a design to foster the Montessori program serving all of Guilford County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Jesse Day followed by Sam Cook followed by Don Vaughn.
Members of the Board, Jesse Day. I'm at 2408 Wright Avenue in Lindley Park. And I want to thank you for your service. I'm a father who was on the School Board growing up. So I know the, the long nights that you go through. And I work in public service as well in local government. I'm a parent of a rising kindergartner. My, my comments are mirroring some that you've heard this evening. And I recognize the need to modernize Lindley Elementary School and to do so by valuing the resources of Guilford County. Attended the presentation at the last Board Meeting with a starkly, two starkly different scenarios that were presented at the, at the meeting in High Point. But I believe there is a cost-effective solution that is somewhere in between with a partial rehabilitation without that significant cost that a few speakers have talked to earlier this evening. So I think that also one thing to remember is we're not in a historic tax credit situation. So you've got flexibility in how you honor those historic resources. So that can lower the costs of, of a partial rehabilitation. So I think that's something that will give the design team flexibility and something that you may want to think about as you, as you consider this very important decision. So that compromise solution, preserving the front facade of the original 1928 school is a way to honor and connect the aesthetic of the original school to the neighborhood while allowing teachers, staff and students to have a very safe and modern facility and modern learning environment and new school facility behind that historic facade. So I, I think this approach supports and builds on the historic Lindley Park community around the school. And I hope the Board will consider this solution and figure out a way to cost-effectively incorporate those design elements while, while modernizing the facility. So I appreciate your time and, and you know, importance of this decision tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, GCS Board and Superintendent. I'm Samuel Cook at 2015 Wright Avenue in Sunset Hills. Also a former resident of Lindley Park. I'm not gonna say a whole lot that hasn't already been mentioned tonight. I am speaking in support of preserving the facade of Lindley Elementary School. Our historic structures mean something. We have examples throughout this city that mean something. The Woolworth Building downtown means something to people. We preserve that. Maybe not as consequential of history, but for the folks who've attended Lindley, that building means something. And I think we're at a crossroads where we can have, as Commissioner Tillman mentioned, the win-win, to have that modern education facility that serves the 21st century and have that connection to the past. I hope that this Board will present a motion tonight to expressly instruct the staff to develop a plan that at the very least preserves the historic facade, the front of the building that you saw earlier in the picture and on the T-shirt. And I'm sure if you've seen online and you've been on campus, you know what the building looks like. Incorporating that facade into the new building design. The supporters in the community hope that the rest of the Board will unanimously support this motion. There's been some informal numbers thrown around, but 2 million is one that's out there. I'm not a structural engineer, but that's one, one number that's come out there from a third party for a total rebuild of 76, against a total rebuild of $76 million. I'd also like to remind the Board, there's a strong, strong support, as you've seen tonight, to preserve the history of Lindley for future generations. Even amongst some members of the community who want a full rebuild. And there are still over 1,400 signatures from a petition online to preserve all or a portion of Lindley. So please consider this opportunity from what you're hearing tonight, from the folks who are speaking, who are in the community, who are your constituents, who, whether they have children or not, support Guilford County Schools and help to preserve that continuity of education in our neighborhoods of Sunset Hills and Lindley Park. When people wake up in the morning and they see the front of the school building, they know it connects to their home and to the history of the area. It's not something that, some design that doesn't fit with the continuity of the area and the history. Please keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's indeed an honor and privilege to be here. I am Don Vaughn. It was my pleasure to serve. Well, first I'm a Well, first, I'm a proud 1964 graduate of Lindley Elementary School. That is just hard to believe. Thank you so much. Anyway, I was pleased to be on the City Council for seven terms, Mayor Protem of Greensboro, representing Lindley, two terms in the State Senate, one as Deputy Leader in the State Senate. I come here as an attorney, professor of law from Wake Forest School of Law. Ask you for the win-win position. This is a Hartman building. The buildings that we have preserved in Greensboro that are other Hartman buildings, Dudley High School, Grimsley High School, North Carolina A and T State University Administration Building, the icon of Greensboro, the Jefferson Standard Building. There's two pages full that are here. Please, I ask you to preserve the facade at Lindley Elementary School and what it stands for. I grew up in the neighborhood. I lived at Market Street for many years. It's a good position to take. I ask you to take, I hope there's a motion tonight to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I need you to know that we received two written comments that were posted on the agenda online. Now we are at the approval of the agenda. And we have a motion to amend the agenda.
Actually, we have two motions. I'll do them one at a time. The first motion, I make a motion to amend the agenda to add consideration of redirection of the proceeds from the sale of the Pixah Church Road property totaling $2,229,950 to add that immediately before the consent agenda.
Second. Okay, um, it starts with Bellamy Small?
Yes, this is just to amend the agenda.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Yes. Oh, Kim?
Yes.
Seven to one.
Okay, that passes seven to one. And the next one?
And there's a, a second motion to amend the agenda to add discussion of a recommendation for board members to have three-minute closing comments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bellamy Small?
No.
Chris?
Yes.
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 Kim?
Yes.
Yes, that passes also seven to one.
Right, right.
Motion to approve the amended agenda, consent agenda or agenda.
The whole agenda.
All right. Well, this, you can pull them off with consent. This is just. All right, to approve the amended agenda. Right.
Okay, um, Bellamy Small? Chris?
Yes.
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 Kim?
Erby?
Yes.
Betty, yes. That passes seven to one.
All right, now you're at the consent agenda.
We have completed the, um, agenda. Now we.
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I believe one of the motions was to come before the consent agenda. Is that correct?
Would I have you ready for me to? All right. I move to direct the Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer to redirect the proceeds from the sale of the Pixah Church Road property totaling $2,229,950 to the General Capital Maintenance Fund for the 2024-2025 fiscal year and to further direct that bond proceeds already designated for athletic fields be used to complete the relocation of the Grimsley Athletic Fields.
Is there a second?
Second.
Kim, is Bellamy Small?
Okay, can we have some discussion about this or are we just going to ram it?
Discussion is always welcome.
Okay, uh, I guess my question is, why do we need specifically direct the Superintendent? And two, why do we want to put the athletic field? You've got two different things here. I'm a little nervous about us lumping them together in one motion.
All right, so I'll explain that. So you, I believe it was December of '23, January of '23, you moved to take the proceeds of the Pixah Church sale, which was the amount you just heard, 2,950 and change, and apply it to the fields that you were reconstructing on the Dudley, excuse me, on the Grimsley and Kaiser property. Because at that point, you did not know what other funds you would have. As it has developed, there are sufficient funds in the bond proceeds designated for athletic fields, number one. Number two, you have general capital needs that you believe could be funded much better than they have been. And so you would be able to shift the way you have the funds allocated to make that happen. So you're directing the Superintendent to, to adjust the budget so that the allocations are different. And you have to do that because you actually had a formal motion in an earlier meeting to use those proceeds in a specific way. And you've already directed her to do that. So now you have to direct her to fix it. So you're really not doing two things. You're really doing one thing. You're just, in order to get everything lined up in the right way, there are two elements to it. The first of which is to put the proper expenses under the proper source of funds. And then, so the Superintendent will do that and then to make available the funds in the bond proceeds for the purpose of the fields at Grimsley.
Can I ask one other question? What kind of costs are you looking at for those athletic fields?
Um, so the estimate that we've come up with is 7.6 million.
For how many fields?
That's for both the baseball and the softball field and all the bleachers associated with it, as well as the demolition of Brooks Global, the existing Brooks Global, and site grading.
Okay. I mean, I, okay, I think you know where my position is. I mean, I, I, I mean, that's a lot of money to spend on two, two fields. And I mean, and I know that athletics is, is though not something that we are directed to do. It is a valuable part of our, uh, school life. But when we're looking at not have enough money to pay our classified employees, not have enough money to pay our teachers, you know, in the scheme of things, $7 million for, for a baseball field and a.
Softball.
Softball field, which, I mean, even though the football fields don't necessarily generate, they generate some funds, although we may not get them, but they still generate funds. I just, you know, I just want us to think about how we, you know, how we prioritize spending money. I mean, I'm not going to go against it, but I just feel like that $7 million for fields is a lot of money.
And I'll just add, we can't spend bond funds on salaries. And so it's just also important to remember we're restricted there. But you're right. I mean, it's a part of the whole picture. That's it. And so just because of the way we've received funding, we need to free up the $2 million to meet emergency capital needs that we know we're going to face in the 24-25 year. And we still have the commitment that we made to the public around the Grimsley fields because that's in consideration for tonight and in the next later projects.
Well, I mean, I, I, I hear what you're saying and I understand. But whenever we're talking to folk, they hear you're spending $7 million. They, they don't necessarily know that, oh, these funds are restricted to that. And I think we just have to say, this is, you know, where these monies go. You know, because we're hurting and I think you already have said that in the area of our salaries. As well as, you know, I think there aren't there some roofs out there that are still leaking? We probably found out this week. Okay, all right. I, I just want clarification on why we're going this way.
Mr. Logan?
With the passage of the bond, the bond money promises were made that Grimsley was going to get replacement of their athletic fields. And I believe the statements were made that if we pass that bond, there would be monies for it. And I believe this is just a guaranteeing of what the board at that time and Superintendent at that time promised was. Pass the bond and you will get your fields replaced. If you do not pass the bond, we're going to take your fields, we're going to build a school, and they will not be replaced because there will not be money for it. So if we made those promises, we should stand by those promises.
Are we ready to pull a vote? Bellamy Small?
Reluctantly, yes.
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 Jenkins, yes. It passed unanimously. Now we had a consent agenda. Dr. Oakley?
Good evening, Madam Vice Chair and members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes the following items. Approval of June 2024 meeting minutes, personnel action report, 2324 budget amendments and transfer report, amendment to 2425 interim budget resolution, project ordinance revisions for construction of new and replacement schools, project ordinance for bond deferred capital replacement projects, contractual agreement with Davenport Lawrence, contractual agreement with McKissick Architecture for Architecture and Engineering Services for the 2022 Deferred Capital Improvement Bond Project, baseball and softball athletic field construction at Grimsley High School, contractual agreement with Walter Robbs Architects and Michael Graves Company for Architecture and Engineering Services for the 2022 Deferred Capital Improvement Bond Project, athletic improvements at Northeast Guilford High School. And that concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Bellamy Small?
Madam Chair, would you pull item B, please? Would you pull item B, please?
Item B or D?
B.
Okay.
B.
Do you have one?
Mr. Logan? E? And H. So I have B as in boy, E as in each, and H as in Harry.
Move the consent agenda, minus B, E, and H.
Okay, on A, C, D, F, G, and I, we'll vote. Bellamy Small?
Yes.
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 And Jenkins, yes. That passes eight to zero. Now for B? I think, Bellamy Small, pull B?
Um, I just, in looking at the report, um, I just wanted to know, how do we look in terms of our personnel vacancies, both classified and certified, if you, if you have that?
At the present, I think it's on, hello, board members. At the present time, we are at the point of about 88 licensed vacancies, uh, which is a little ahead of where we've been in the past. But we, we feel we're making good progress. Still have a little ways to go. And our classified vacancies are pretty close in the same arena. And of course, you know that one that bothers us the most, which is bus drivers. That's where, where things are at this point.
Well, I also noticed on, I think this is the last page, um, your subs, you only have, it looks like 10, 10 or 12? Or is that just?
Just the brand-new people to, to the sub listing. That's not, yeah, we have several thousand.
So we're in a good place?
We're in the process of finding out if they want to continue with us.
So you're in a good place as far as subs are concerned?
As long as they're willing to continue to follow up with us. Yes, ma'am. We feel we're in a good place.
Okay, so what does a person need to do if they are interested?
Just.
You need subs in other places other than just in the classroom, is that correct?
That is correct. So individuals need only to, um, apply. We have applications for every area and for substitutes in all areas. So they need only to go online and apply to the district. And if they need help with that, they just need to let us know, call us, and we'll be happy to answer any questions and help them through the process. They can even come in and we'll help them walk through the process or complete the application if necessary.
Okay, you, you said in other areas, like?
Maintenance, um, you know, we need plumbers, we need, um, lawn yard guys. We need, you know, every area you can name. I mean, we're like a small city.
Okay, well, guess when you say subs.
Substitutes for.
Yeah, people automatically think you're only talking about.
Talking about teachers, yes.
Yes. And so I, I wanted it clear that there are opportunities.
Teachers, office support, treasurers, um, again, you know, plumbers, HVAC. Again, very much like a small city. We need everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Move the item.
Have a second? Okay, ready to vote? Bellamy Small?
Yes.
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 I'm sorry. Pardon me? Everybody, please use your mic. Um, it passes eight to zero. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Logan, thank you. Pull E?
Yes. Couple of quick questions. One is, in Claxton Elementary, we're going up 888,000. Is that going to change any? We had a discussion at a previous meeting about increased fee for an architect because prices increased. Is that going to have any effect on that?
No, that's not, I'm sorry.
Will we be revisiting that?
Okay, um, so no, this is associated with ordering additional furniture, playground equipment, anything that comes up as we complete that project, because reminder we'll be opening that school in August. So that's what that increase is associated with.
Thank you. That was my only question.
Napper?
We had set maximum prices on the amounts that we were willing to spend on both projects. Are we still under those caps?
So some of, like I said, playground wasn't included in the guaranteed maximum price that they gave us before. We're now adding playground to their scope of work and so that we will be bringing a, um, a new guaranteed maximum price to the board for approval once this amount is approved.
Okay.
Call a motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, Bellamy Small?
Yes.
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 Jenkins, yes. Passes eight to zero. Okay, Ms. Napper, you want to pull I? I'm sorry, H.
And the reason I wanted to pull the item is very much like Ms. Bellamy Small for clarification purposes. Um, in spring of, early spring of 2023, we did vote a little more than $2 million to replace the fields that were taken from the athletics at Grimsley and Kaiser to build the new Kaiser Elementary, or yes, Kaiser Middle, which is in full swing and going quite well. And so in, as Mr. Logan mentioned, in keeping our word to those schools and their programs, I would like to point out first off the increase in the amount that we are able to put into these fields, which I believe will be much more suited to the work that's going to need to be done there. And also, it was brought to my attention that not only do they support softball and baseball, but they also will support practices for lacrosse and soccer too. So we've got several different, different sports that are going to cross on these fields and they'll be used year-round. And I just wanted that brought to everybody's attention because I know that it's still very much on the radar for the community between Grimsley and Kaiser. I want to know that these have not fallen off the radar for the Board of Education. So I will move the item.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Bellamy Small?
Yes.
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 Jenkins, yes, it passes eight to zero. Thank you. Now we're at the comments from the chair. Good evening. We are excited to be opening a newly constructed Claxton Elementary for the 2024-25 school year. A ribbon-cutting ceremony will be held on Monday, August the 12th. Progress continues at PEC, Faust, Kaiser, and Brooks Global Studies, which will open later this year, this school year. The teacher supply warehouse has reopened for the 2024-25 school year. We want to thank Guilford Education Alliance for collecting school supplies and allowing our educators to stop and shop at the warehouse for free. If you are a GCS educator, sign up for your shopping appointment at G-E-A-N-C dot org. That is G-E-A-N-C dot org. Don't forget to keep reading this summer. Students who read at least six hundred minutes between now and August the 25th will receive a free ticket to the Kersey Valley seasonal attraction. Visit our website and look for the flyer on the piece jar to submit your minutes electronically. For students going to seventh and twelfth grade who need required vaccinations, Guilford County School will hold a vaccination clinic on August the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth. That is August the thirteenth, fourteenth, and fifteenth, in partnership with Guilford County Health Department. Appointments are recommended. Please call three-three-six, six-four-one, three-two-four-five to schedule your appointment. That is three-three-six, six-four-one, three-two-four-five for your appointment. Thank you very much, and this concludes my remarks. Now we have, uh, words from superintendent, oh. Now we have report from Superintendent Oakley.
Thank you, good evening. I want to start by congratulating our communications team, which took home thirty-one national awards for communications earlier this month, including a Golden Achievement Award. This team also won awards for writing, videography, social media, photography, and website communications. In just a few short weeks, we will welcome our first round of students for the first day of school in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Students at our early and middle colleges and academies and at our extended school year schools will start on Tuesday, August sixth. Then, on Monday, August twenty-sixth, students on the traditional academic calendar will return. We look forward to having our students back in the buildings. If you're looking for back-to-school information, you can find it on our website at www.gcsnc.com/backtoschool24. This will include important information, including school meals, transportation, supply lists, and bell schedules. Parents are encouraged to attend their child's open house to meet staff and learn more about the upcoming school year. For schools on the traditional academic calendar, the high school open house will be on Tuesday, August twentieth, the middle school open house will be on Wednesday, August twenty-first, and the elementary open house will be on Thursday, August twenty-second, and you can check with your child's school for specific times. Please make sure your child's school knows how to reach you. You can update your contact information by logging into the Power School Parent Portal or by contacting your school's data manager. Also, be sure to claim your Power School Parent Portal account so that you can keep up with grades and assignments this school year. Finally, I'd just like to express my sincere thanks to our technology team, who were at schools and offices throughout this whole past weekend and well into the night, working to repair computers following the CrowdStrike outage. The team prioritized locations that had summer programming and were serving students so that student learning would not be interrupted. Thank you, this concludes my remarks.
Thank you. Okay, now we have action items. Can I please have a motion?
I move, uh, that, uh, that we, okay, we're not going to get any other?
We did the full report at the prior meeting.
Uh, then I move, uh, um, item A, which is a recommendation of the build a new Irwin Montessori at the former Archer Elementary School location.
Second.
They're moving second, um, ready to vote?
Again, we can, can we say anything?
Pardon me?
Can we say anything?
Yes.
Okay, um, and my, part of my reason for, um, supporting this is that, um, it's, there's a phrase in the Bible that talks about putting, um, new wine in old skins, and that, that will, that, that the new ones will cause the old skins, uh, to burst, okay? When we are looking at trying to, um, look at twenty-first century education for our kids, we need to look at how does that fit in what the twenty-first century means and is? Okay, everybody in here, I'm sure, has a cell phone, right? So you are in the twenty-first century, whether you want to be or not, whether you, you don't like having to have this thing attached to your, your hip every day or not. Our children need to have the kind of facilities that prepare them for pass today. And we need to build facilities that last for another, um, seventy-five to a hundred years, which means that none of us will be here, but your great-grandchildren, if my math is right, if you have any, will be here. Um, so I, I think that, a- as we look at, because we're going to be marching down this road at least for the next, um, few years, in terms of whether to build, rebuild, save or not save. So I, I hope that people can respect and understand that we are trying to bring us into the twenty-first century. That's what we're trying to do. We are not tearing down any building that was built in twenty, in the twenty-first century. We're talking about buildings that were built when I was a child, and that was seventy years ago. And some of y'all in here are as old as I am, so I just want us to, you know, keep that in mind as we make these votes. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Irwin was one of those schools that was in desperate rundown. Really sad condition, okay? And there are still schools out there, I personally have schools in my district that are still in a very, uh, depressed state of need, okay? So I'm excited for Irwin. I am excited for Lindley, all right? However, there is still going to be a lot of schools sitting out there that will not have the privilege to be in a brand-new school, who will still, I mean, with the inflation that we're dealing with, those dollars are not going as far as we had promised them to go. And I worry how far they are going to go, all right? Because we are seeing double what we had expected, and we made a lot of promises to a lot of people. So count your blessings that you have been privileged to get a new school. And I'm excited for Irwin because they spent a lot of time in a school that, you know, it just, I wish none of our children, I wish all our children could have the kind of, um, facilities that, uh, we're looking at for, but we will still have children in facilities that do not have anywhere near the beautiful surroundings that a new school would bring. So I'm excited for Irwin, I'm excited for Lindley, I'm excited for Claxton and all those that have that blessing. But remember, there are a lot of children, a lot of schools, that are still in desperate need of capital funding.
Ms. Pratt?
Just to piggyback a little bit on, uh, what Ms. Welborn was saying, I am so excited about all of the new construction that's happening here in Guilford County. I think it's very exciting to be able to have this opportunity to upgrade our schools and provide our students with, and our staff, with amazing space. And, you know, we talk about, um, twenty-first century education, but, you know, here we are a quarter of the way into the twenty-first century. We really need to be upgrading all our facilities, and I'm thrilled that we're doing that. I would just encourage Dr. Monk and his team to make sure that, you know, we're being as fiscally responsible as we can with the money that we had. As you indicated, our costs are going up so much in every, you know, our daily lives, our grocery bills are growing up, our gas bills are going up, and construction costs of schools are going up. Um, and we have wonderful professionals in our operations department who know how to make our dollars go as far as possible, so I just wanted to encourage that you all continue the good work that you're doing and be good stewards of the money that we have to do the best that we can for our schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Bellamy Small?
Yes.
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 Jenkins, yes, they'll vote eight to zero. Thank you. Next, we have items, um, B?
Madam Chair, make a, uh, motion that the recommendation to build a new, uh, Lindley Elementary School, uh?
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I'd like to, discussion.
Okay, um, what's your ask?
I wanted to comment and, uh, highlight the level of community engagement and the quality of that, and, um, the benefit that that is to us as a board, uh, and, and really honor and say how much we appreciate the level of feedback we've received here tonight, which is representative of, of some of what we've heard, um, but to also acknowledge the range of what we've heard from teachers and families and alums and neighborhood and community advocates. And among that, uh, was a recent community meeting, uh, July tenth, I believe, that was held at Lindley Elementary. Thank you to the principal for hosting us, um, but we heard there from individuals and in some formal way from, uh, at least three groups, the Neighborhood Association, uh, Preservation Greensboro, and the, uh, ad hoc Lindley Advocacy Group, some of what we heard here tonight, and that is a desire for staff to consider the possibility of preserving the facade. I think that language is important because I think implicit in that is the acknowledgement that it may not be possible to preserve the facade, but we were asked to consider that, uh, and we heard that, and we have done some further work on that. So Dr. Monk and Dr. Oakley and others who might inform this, I wanted to, to know if we could hear some, uh, of what the findings of that further analysis was, and I may have some follow-up questions around that.
Sure, and, and thank you for the opportunity. Um, I think that, um, it was mentioned in the initial report, facadism is the term that was used by the design team, uh, to, uh, to refer to keeping just a facade. Um, after those meetings, we did go back and ask them to, um, put a number with what that, uh, would be, and they came anywhere between five to seven and a half million dollars, um, of work that would need to be done to stabilize and, and keep the facade. Um, I think there's a couple of different things that's important to note about that. Uh, it still, uh, creates tremendous challenges as it relates to the site itself because of where the nineteen-twenty-eight, uh, facility is located. Um, I believe that, um, Coach Chair Jenkins mentioned there's public comments that are written. I receive a lot of, um, comments both in person, calls and in writing, and some of those comments is about maintaining the natural areas that are, um, currently on the, the Lindley campus. Uh, the designers spoke about not being able to build across that little creek that runs through the property in that wooded area, and so that shrunk the site even more. And so the idea, um, because we realize there's a lot of sacred things there, and everything, um, that's sacred to one person isn't sacred to another. Uh, but what we do know is that the, the site has been graded and, um, trees have already been removed from certain parts of the site, and that's what the, the designers, as they look forward to, um, reshaping that campus so that we can still meet the intent of the project of making sure that the campus is safe, not only from the number of doors that are associated with the facility, but also the walkability, um, and the vehicular traffic on and, and off the campus. Um, it's also important that, um, we are reducing our footprint. Um, I believe the designers spoke, because of the size of the acreage, it's already going to be a three-story, um, facility. Um, and we want to make sure that there's still areas where students, um, can have playgrounds and, and fields and, and, and things that we don't necessarily associate, um, with the building. Um, and so while many things are possible, I think, um, that, you know, speaking to what Ms. Pratt said early in her charge, uh, to, to me and the, and the rest of our staff, with, you know, making sure that we're being as fiscally responsible as, as possible, it is in our opinion, um, that that does that, that it meets the intent of what, uh, the, the project was to begin with. It gives us a, uh, place on the campus where if we needed to, um, expand, that, uh, we may have that flexibility to do so, um, that keeping the nineteen-twenty-eight facade where it is now, um, just doesn't lend itself to.
Um, and can I ask, in addition, Dr. Monk, uh, and, and I know that this information came to us recently, and, and I learned of it today, uh, but how this notion of facadism and preserving the, preserving the facade is estimated to impact the timing of the project?
Sure, it is, um, certainly going to be additional engineering time that's above what the, uh, the project is, and we're also estimating, you know, anywhere between six to eight months of additional construction time. Um, and likely, um, even for the main building that's going to be up against it, um, you know, some, you, you, it's not like you can just go in there and start doing things because you don't want to disturb, um, that facade that you're trying to save, and so it'll be a much slower, um, process.
So the, the six-month or so addition is over and above what's already estimated for the project, not something that could coincide with other elements of the project?
Correct, because we were first looked to stabilize, um, the facade, then the demo, and then to build up against the, um, the facade.
I have one additional question. So as, as I measure this and fellow board members, uh, I, I have been engaged in this process and have, um, have hoped for an elusive win-win, uh, but I think that the value of preservation of history, which are important values to me, I live in a historic neighborhood, uh, are, are things that are secondary to the priorities of cost and enrollment needs and timing. Um, so if that is indeed the way in which we move forward with accepting the recommendation from the superintendent and staff, uh, we've also heard a, a strong sense from the community, and it was stated here tonight by Ms. Arkin from the Neighborhood Association, that whatever happens here, uh, that the community be considered a resource and have a chance to be a part of, uh, making sure that the ultimate design integrates with the architecture and the built environment of Lindley Park. Uh, and can you talk about, um, how we've heard that concern and how that would be possible if we were to move forward with the rebuild?
Absolutely, we, we, we have definitely heard that concern. It's not, um, something that is novel to us. We've done this in the past with, um, different projects that we've had before. Um, my memory's not as good as it used to be, but, um, it was either Union Hill or Hunter in which we took the freezes, which is basically the concrete structure, I believe. Um, the picture they showed would be the books that are situated in the school, and we removed those and actually put those in the, the, the brick that, um, that we did for the new facility. in the auditorium, and maybe making that into part of what the mascot is for the facility. Another great example is the Grinsly Cafeteria, in which we're building this new structure on the site with older buildings, in which we, you know, try to match the brick as closely as possible and then put elements, same type of architectural elements that you would find in Grinsly in the cafeteria. And those are the commitments that we're making to this community. Sumner Elementary, which is a project that we're doing here recently, we actually had a community meeting there where the community participated in what we call charrettes, and where the designers showed them what the different exteriors of the facility could look like so they could get an idea of how that facility would fit in their community. And those are the things that we would also do for this project.
Okay. Mr. Logan?
History. $300 million bond passed, and with that, there was a guarantee to the neighborhood of, we're going to fix the school, we're going to add 100 seats. And in that, it was going to cost 3.8 million to add the 100 seats, correct?
Yes.
And this is off the 2019 plan, which we always reference to when we go back to. Priority repairs were going to be 6,327, basically 6.4 million dollars for doing priority repairs and having a school with 100 extra seats and the school fixed up to teaching standards. And we've gone from, and we promised the community that. There are emails and communications of, we promised, pass this bond, this is what we're going to do for you. And we're not living up to those promises. So I would really like to amend this motion to where we save the facade or the front of that building, and we as a board should vote on that.
The original scope of repairs, were they the same as what we're planning on, that we would have to do or to make it? I mean, I don't think, did I step on toes?
Yes, next in line was Ms. Erby. So I have you, have you next.
I'm asking about scope. Was the original scope the same kind of scope that we're looking at to really do? Or was it a more scaled back scope? Because how much money were we talking back then?
So, the original scope was 3.8 million for just an addition.
Yeah.
In 2020, in February 2022, that scope was expanded to, I mean, anywhere from, it also changed it from being a K5 school to a K8, adding a STEM center, doing full renovations. I mean, it was a, it was a pretty broad scope, and that was changed in February 2022.
So we're talking two drastically different scopes?
Right.
Because, and that's the reason, so we could go back to just adding an addition, and everything could stay for the amount of money that we were talking.
So, I doubt it would be 3.8 nowadays, but that would be, right, that would be the original scope, would be just the addition.
Okay, let's back up a little bit because Ms. Welborn jumped in before we had a chance to get a second on Mr. Logan's motion.
Well, he didn't make a motion. I did accept the amendment, so he needs to make a substitute motion, because I'm not accepting that amendment.
Okay. You need to speak on the mic.
I said, I'm not accepting the amendment to my motion, so he needs to make a substitute motion if that's what you want to do.
Mr. Logan, would you like to make a new motion?
I would like to make a substitute motion then. And in the substitute motion, I would like to keep the same motion and add the wording of, motion to save and incorporate the facade of Lindley Elementary into any new construction.
Second.
Okay, if we move in second, so we'll start with the...
Can we finish our questions before we vote on anything else?
Next is Napper.
Okay, just a few basic questions to clarify a few things here if we could. What's the current capacity for Lindley Elementary?
So, the, and please don't hold me to this, I'm going to use round numbers, it's a little over 400 in the existing facility, and then in the mobiles takes up to, I think it has an enrollment of like 550 now, or somewhere close to that.
So that's why I'm asking, the actual capacity that students can hold is around 400?
Correct.
The current capacity is 500, and I think I've got 504.
You're right.
So they are over capacity, and if I'm not mistaken, they have been for several years?
Correct.
Do we have a projected capacity for the next year, two years, three years?
Yeah, so we do them in 10-year increments. We see it going up to likely at least 650. As a part of the master plan, there may be some blind changes that are associated with easing overcrowding and some other places that would add additional students to that, to that campus.
And so to clarify, the addition of 100 additional seats at Lindley would not solve overcrowding issues?
Correct.
Thank you. That was, for the record, that was before, that was on my slate before you made your motion.
Okay, Ms. Erby?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to know, I know they're asking for the front facade, but is there any piece of that building that could be part of the design, even if it's not the front facade? Is there another part that, has that been considered?
Yes, I think the, like I said, the cast-in-place freezes are things that can be incorporated into the new facility design, and then the new facility design itself can have that look and feel of what's there now.
So, part of the building or none of the building, or just bricks that look like the building?
Right, we would take portions of the building and incorporate it into the new building, and then...
Got it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Napper?
So, final question, and, you know, I mean, I guess this is a little bit more directed at the community than directly at you, Julius, Dr. Monk, apologies. Actually, let me get you to clarify one thing for me, Dr. Monk. The original thing that was in this presentation, saving the front building at Lindley, the schematic that is given from the June 27th meeting is saving the facade, yes, but the entire building behind it also, and then building in addition to the back, basically. And this is where the seating capacity thing comes into play, and the extra $20 million for the work and the logistics and the whole nine yards. I, I may be mistaken in this understanding, but I was to understand at that time that there was not really a way to separate that front facade from the building behind it without basically the facade coming down without that support. Is that correct, or am I wrong?
Correct, you would have to support that facade, and that's where that five to seven and a half additional million dollars comes in.
Okay. So pulling, so just maintaining the front of the building and taking out the older support structure, basically the pictures that we're looking at of everything falling down, that would take between five to seven million?
Correct.
Maintaining the support structure behind it and building the addition to the back is what would take the extra 20 million?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I'm trying to...
So we would be renovating all the buildings that are there now, and then building additions for those things, for those spaces that we can't get out of the building now, like gyms and better media centers and, you know, things like that.
And I'm just kind of trying to quantify in my head which pieces are which, because, you know, a lot of it does come down to how much can we preserve? Are the key elements of the, in the pictures that were given to us in the public statements earlier enough of a preservation? The books around the windows, the building, the doors that you mentioned, things of that nature, is something for us all to consider, and I just wanted to get a picture of what those pieces look like, preserving just the facade, preserving the facade and the building attached, or complete demolition? Thank you.
Well, then with Pratt, about Ms. Small?
So, this, this has been a very interesting topic. I think in the short time that I've been on the board, this has been one of the topics that we've received the most emails, had the most comments, and most engagement from the community on. And, you know, all of us up here are elected by the community to listen to what people have to say and then make decisions based on your input, based on our own professional backgrounds, and all sorts of other factors. And I think it's, it's really, really important to us to be listening to what the community has to say about this. And, yeah, I absolutely am on the side of, let's, it's funny because I just talked about being fiscally conservative and, you know, working to make sure that we cut corners and save money where appropriate, but I also think that listening to the community and preserving as much history as possible is extremely important, and I think what we up here are charged to do is to listen to what people have to say and take that into consideration in our decisions. So, I just want to be clear before we move on about sort of where we are with our options of what we're voting on to lay it out. So, we have the original motion, which is complete rebuild, not saving the actual facade itself, but kind of, you know, everything to the ground. And then we have the substitute motion that was made, which is keep the facade, knock everything else down, and rebuild behind it. Am I understanding that from how you're understanding it, Dr. Monk?
I won't speak for the substitute, but, yeah, our idea is to, we would be building a new school, but using elements from the existing school in the construction of the new school. So that's what ours would be.
Okay, and I know that a lot of the communications that we got, you know, this, this isn't fully a black and white issue. We would get a lot of emails that said, you know, yes, we absolutely need to rebuild. I do not disagree with that at all. Like, that building is not in good shape, along with many other GCS buildings as well. There are problems with the electricity, there's, you know, asbestos, there's this, there's that. It's not a good environment conducive to learning or safe for our staff to work in. So I fully support that, but I, I think there are some people who said, you know, well, we want to make sure we only go towards the complete rebuild, and we're sort of seeing that, no, there's no opportunity to preserve history if we do rebuild. So this substitute motion, and Mr. Logan, correct me if I'm wrong on this, is really doing a complete rebuild, which people have asked for, but maintaining the historical facade at the same time. Is that what you're looking for, Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I add on?
Absolutely, I'm finished.
Hold on a second. Next is, Ms. Small?
Dr. Monk, where are you going to build a new school?
So, if we, if the board decides to keep the facade, just like this now...
That's not my question. Where are you going to build a new school?
I would have, we would have to think really deeply about that, depending on which way that the board goes.
Okay, well, let me see if I can answer the question I'm asking. You, are you going to build a school where the current school is, right?
That was not the intent, no.
You don't intend to build a new school on the location where the current school is?
Not the exact location, actually we want a more center, the school on campus.
But, basically, you're going to put that school where the old school is, if you were able to build it there?
Yeah, yeah, same eleven acre.
You're making it more complicated than I'm trying to make.
I apologize, I just want to be clear, because I think that, and I don't mean to be complicated, right? But I think that the location on the 11 acres matters, and that's the conversation as staff that we're having is that a new school does not fit where the current school is, but we would need to use the entire site for new campus.
Okay, my, what I'm trying to, my point is, is that this neighborhood will get, would get a new school?
Yes.
Period, that's my point, so, you know, you're overthinking it for me, all right? But that's okay, you're brilliant, I don't, I don't. What would be the capacity of the new school?
So we would look to have it around 750 students, which would include pre-K and exceptional children classes.
Okay, so, so in essence, our services would increase?
Increase, correct.
Good, thank you, all right, don't overthink it, all right? If I understood you correctly, in order to try to preserve or save the facade, either the facade would have to be moved, which, or the building would have to, where you have the site for your new building would have to be moved to come up to where the facade is, is that, do I understand that correctly?
Yeah, so the, I'm thinking through, because I, is, is the current location of the building makes it challenging to build a 750-seat school and match up with the facade?
Okay, thank you. Okay, I want to tell y'all a story, I ain't going to be long, but I'm an old owl in this barn, and I would tell, challenge any of you here to Google the Ice House that used to be on East Market Street. And I know that Ms. Arkin, who I think served with me when I was on city council, she knows exactly what I'm talking about. There was a historical building that sat on East Market Street. If you're going out of East Market Street towards Merrill Boulevard, before you get to the railroad track, there used to be an Ice House that sat there on the left-hand side, all right? City Council made a decision that we were going to preserve that building. We spent over $300,000 for the preservation of that building, and what Dr. Monk is talking about is what happened. When they went to peel away the back of the building to preserve that facade, guess what it did? It fell. So, the city, the city council, I was on the city council, we were very quiet about the facts of our oops, but we wasted taxpayers' dollars of $300,000 to try to preserve something that just couldn't be preserved any longer. So if you drive down East Market Street now, I don't know what's there now, it used to be a parking lot. My point is this, okay? The neighborhood is not going to go away just because we build a new school there. It will still be Lindley Park, it'll be Lindley Park for another 100 years because of the people. What you want, I would hope, is to have something that when you drive by there, you can say, you know what? This is what we've done for our neighborhood. It's just like what we've done for PEC. PEC, for so long, had a school that did not serve the community as well as it could have. But now, the new PEC is actually going to have a gymnasium and other things that have not been there before, that is going to really help that whole community regrow, revitalize itself. So, if you don't, if you, like I said, Google Ice House, and you'll see, there's some things we can't preserve. If they start peeling away the main building from the facade, you saw, if you were in High Point, you saw the pictures, I'm going to tell you what's going to happen. That building, the facade is going to crumble. And so you will have wasted whatever it takes to try to shore it up that could have been spent towards the new building, or at least not added to the cost of the new building. So I implore this board to, you know, we can do other things that uplift the Lindley community. We already have, the fact that we've talked with them, they've got plenty of stories to share, they'll be able to come to that school and talk about the days of whenever they went there, and what was important. Was the school that important, or was it getting a good education? I mean, I'm just, you know, all of you in here who are saying that you were former graduates, including Dr. Vaughn, Attorney Vaughn, who I used to serve with, he got a good education, otherwise he wouldn't have been able to do, well, in my opinion, he got a good education, don't judge it, okay? But my point is, is that, is what's more important here? Saving a hundred years that most people, if you were not... Saving a a a hundred years that most people, if you are not at least 70 or 80 years old, you don't even remember the history of the early days of Lindley? Or providing a place where teachers, students, pre-K, special ed, where we can do things that we hadn't been able to do for this community before? Where you want to put your dollars? Where do you want to put the the best bang for your buck?
Alan?
Let me say, I I don't have concerns about the ability for the facade to remain standing with the quality of engineers that we would be working with. I do have questions about how it impacts, how we project it would impact the the size of what we're able to build and the capacity of the new school if we were to preserve the facade. I think I heard you say that there would be an impact there in in answer to Board Member Bellamy Small, but just wondered if you could give some more about the early projections of how enrollment or capacity would be affected.
Yeah, I think that some of these questions that you're asking, you have to go through a design process to to get to, to be honest with you. And we're just not there yet. But I would say that if we were to say we still want to have that large of a a school there for, you know, whether it's continued growth or to continue our master plan and the changes we're making, it may be a separate addition on the site somewhere else if we can't get everything to, you know, align right. I think that takes away from part of, in particular with this project, of trying to get, you know, students under one roof for a number of reasons, mainly safety. But a lot of these questions that you're answering, unfortunately, are going to lend themselves out as you go through the the design process.
I think just to add that, I I also, I think it's important to say a few things out loud. Like, we can build a Lindley that looks like the building on the T-shirt. You can do that in the design process. No one takes for granted how difficult it is to give up something either. Like, I don't I don't think anything's being passed over as not as an easy decision, or we wouldn't spend this much time talking about it. If we reduce the capacity or we don't follow the projections of one of the fastest-growing zip codes in this community, we will have to redraw who gets to go to Lindley. And so I just think we have to be really clear about this is based on who currently goes to Lindley, and it's not a made-up number. We have 10-year projections of enrollment and what that looks like. And we also have kids sitting in mobile units who would continue. You know, if, we just have to think about what the math is telling us and the fact that they don't currently have a gym. I mean, there's just some things that go along with that. So I just think as we consider both both the current, the initial motion and the substitute motion, it's important to just say those facts out loud and know that it's not a decision that's taken lightly either way.
Okay. Mr. Logan?
Mr. Monk, and I thank you for all the work. I have toured the school. And I'll be honest, that school is in very poor shape. It is in horrible shape. It's probably one of the worst schools, is, I will say, from Southern Guilford standards. We were a shining diamond down there. Has the community been provided any architectural diagrams of what a new school would look like?
No.
So do people in our community and outside of our community work for the Civil Rights Museum? It wasn't just people in Greensboro. It was people all across the country. They worked. They funded. They put money into it because they wanted it. I believe the neighborhood is reaching out and saying they want to keep the field that they have at Lindley. And they would like to keep as much as they can of what they have. And we made that promise. And I'd like to see us stand by it.
Ms. Herbie?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, I just want to be clear on what it is also that in the facilities master plan, that it's an opportunity that we gave to, you know, to all of the schools in Guilford County that we're not gonna see come to fruition, unfortunately, due to inflation. So, you know, I would hate for the Lindley community to miss out on an opportunity that other schools are not going to have, or we're gonna have to figure it out. But one of the questions I have for Dr. Oakley is that why is there a need for that school to be reconfigured to become a pre-K through eight? And are we planning on, which I want to hear, allowing other students to be in that middle school? Like, what, can you remind us of that?
I think in the early, early facilities master plan, there was a proposed K-8 with a STEM center. When the master plan was revised, and anybody who's been to the site would know that that's not going to fit there. So when that revision was made, it was remade, it was revised to be a K-5. And that's been the plan since this conversation began. So traditional K-5 community school is the plan for Lindley.
Oh, okay, because I heard Dr. Monk say it's pre-K for eight. That's why.
And back on the early, early iterations of the master plan, there were four STEM centers. There were several K-8 programs. And as we get down the list and we get to the part where we walk the site and see what's feasible, I mean, clearly, it's, we're down to a certain number of acres. And so this is traditional K-5 serving its neighborhood.
Okay, K-5, not pre-K.
It already has pre-K. And part of our program design and feedback from the community is to serve as many four-year-olds as we possibly can. So all of our new schools have been built with pre-K classrooms. This would not be an exception. We wouldn't remove pre-K from Lindley.
Okay. Um, what is the, would have been the maintenance cost if we just renovated this school? Did we look at the projected maintenance cost? Are we just gonna give them what was the original plan?
So no, we did not look at renovation alone because of them currently being over capacity.
Okay, okay. So there definitely is like this growing capacity in this community that's proven, and we are gonna fill the building up with at least 700 children.
Over time, likely, and it and it may even exceed that at some point. And and that's the, that's what we we battle and that's the challenge all the time of trying to guess where people are gonna live. But right now, it's trending that way.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Ms. Welborn?
Okay. I just want to go back. The $3 million, which is what was the original, I don't know when it changed and how it changed, but in in the the original plan, there was $3 million associated for Lindley.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
That was it. That was it. So that that point, the facade was not going to be touched, correct?
Right.
Correct. And all that was, was to add an addition somewhere on the back of it. So they got a little bit more capacity.
That's right.
Right? Where did it change to become where they are getting, like, everything new? EC, all this probably new technology? It has gone from one little addition to a full-blown, everything new, everything enhanced, everything changed, everything updated. So when we said we wouldn't touch the facade, correct? We were just adding an addition, right? Now, I guess my question is, do we want the addition and not touch the facade? Or do we want the, all the advantages of having a new school? Because that's what changed it, getting all this additional things that they weren't originally promised. And have, and where we're at is to give them all those additional things is that we can't fit all those wonderful things in the same footprint of the existing school. So I guess my question is, you know, we're upset about that facade, but what you had was a $3 million addition originally. Now you have a whole new school that when you walk into that school, when the old one, you're you're, you were gonna get some lipstick put on your new school or on your old school. You were gonna get some new paint. You were gonna get maybe your front cleaning and all that, and you were gonna get a building behind it. But you know what they are saying is you are getting everything. Now, I don't know, somehow it got changed, and I don't know when it got changed. But we're going from an addition where you could have your facade as it is, or now we're going to a massive, totally new school where you get so many additions and so much, everything's new, new furniture, new technology. So I I know they will make every opportunity to make the building fit into Lindley, okay? And make it look like you want it to look. But they, that footprint does not provide what they need to do to give you all that additional. How much is it gonna cost now?
So our recommendation is like 72, 73 million.
All right. So we went from 3 million to 72 million. And we're fighting over a facade. When they're saying, I'm, I promise you, they will not make it stand out. They will make it look good. They will use as much as they can. But there is a big difference in scope from when they said we won't touch the facade to now that we will touch the facade. I just want to make that clarification.
Thank you for the great discussion. We are going to, as far as Robert's rule of order, we're gonna go back to the substitute motion and vote on the substitute motion first. And so, Mr. Logan, if you can please restate your motion so we can get a second and we can move as far as action, please. Okay. Okay. Ms. Bellamy Small?
No.
Yes.
No.
For reasons of cost and enrollment and timing, no.
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 Jenkins, no. That fails six to two.
Does she have a call for the original motion?
Can we get a second? Okay. Bellamy Small?
Yes.
I implore the design team and the facilities team to include as many elements as possible from the original building in the new rebuild. And with that, I'll vote yes.
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 This one's killing me, you guys. Uh, yes.
I wish you could have the facade on the front.
Kim?
I'm voting yes for the original motion.
Thank you.
Okay, Jenkins, yes. That passes unanimously. Okay, next, we have the three-minute comment for the board. For board comments, Ms. Pratt?
Forgot all about this. We've been in conversation for so long. I would like to make a motion that we put a time limit on the closing comments for board members to match the same time limit that we have for the public, which is a three-minute conversation.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I would like to say I commit to that three-minute, that three-minute time, but I will be voting no because I find this to be over managerial and unbecoming a professional board.
Thank you.
You know, I find it interesting that the same folk who wanted to make sure that speakers from the floor, we added more time, that we give them more time. Now you want to turn around and restrict us from being able to make, you know, comments. We don't need to be, we don't need to police ourselves like that. There are some, if you, if if you ain't got anything to say, don't say it. But if those of us who have something to say, we ought to be allowed to say it. So I I really don't appreciate folks trying to police, you know, that that you put a motion out here to police us. That's like telling me, well, I want to make sure that you don't campaign so hard during your campaign. You know, and part of that is that I sit here so therefore people see me. And you can't restrict how much time I wind up getting before the camera. So why are you trying to, you know, I don't understand why we would try to restrict what we want to say. Because I know one thing, we tried to do this before. And I remember a lady who sat right over there, who says she was gonna talk as long as she wanted to. And, you know, she was allowed to.
Okay, we ready for a vote? Bellamy Small?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Kim?
No.
Jenkins, yes. Vote passes five to three. Now, it's time for the board comments, three minutes. Logan?
Do you believe that's timely, Mike?
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, it is.
Yep. Thank. Can I go now?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a clock on the wall, so we know? Okay. All right. Don't have a lot to say. I do thank the members of Lindley for coming out. I truly wish we could have shown a design before we ever said we're gonna tear your building down. Because reality is, you do not know what your replacement will look like, what it will be constructed of. It is an unknown. So my hope is, when I come to the board meeting and we are discussing the design, or we have a meeting where we are discussing the design, that I see the name, same number of people involved in that process. Our public schools are public schools. Our public money is public money. And the public should be involved in all those decisions. And thank y'all for coming out.
Ms. Napper?
Restart my timer, Jill. Okay, good. I hope to offer a little bit of encouragement to the Lindley community. I talked with Dr. Oakley about this earlier, about the process that we have to go by, that we're bound by both local and state laws we have to follow when we start to build a new school that prohibited us, unfortunately, for putting a design out first. We have to go by the process because I also brought the same thing as as Mr. Logan just brought up. But I hope that when you look at what we're doing with the ball fields at Grimbley and Kaiser, you can take some encouragement from that. They were very upset with us at first that we wanted to build on their ball fields. And we have done everything that we can to meet the requests that they've made. We've stored the items from their ball fields that the Booster Association purchased, and we made sure they were stored properly, and they'll be fit and proper for use when the ball fields are rebuilt, as we were asked to do. We have, not only did we allocate money initially to go and rebuild those ball fields, but now we have opened up an avenue to more than triple that money to rebuild those ball fields, fit and proper back the way that they should be. And they also have a brand-new Kaiser Middle School. And so I have heard a commitment tonight from Dr. Oakley saying that we can build something so similar to what's on the front of that shirt, to Dr. Monk saying we can instruct the design team to follow the path that Lindley has already set, and that we can pull the pieces from that facade to keep as parts and pieces of what we build next. So I hope that you can look at the work that we've done and see that we kept our intent and made better, and that we are sitting here, every single one of us, saying, we can do this for you too, but we also want to give you all of the brand-new and all of the good things for not only the Lindley community, but for the students and for the teachers.
Thank you, Ms. Herbie.
Kim, your closing comments?
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Uh, yeah. Yeah, I hope everybody is having a great summer, even though it's hot. We have made some very difficult decisions, and there are more difficult decisions to come. And just because we don't vote with the community on some things, it does not mean that we did not listen, does not mean that we did not give consideration in our, you know, decisions that we're making. We toil with things, I know I do, and we think about things wholeheartedly when the community is talking to us. So, you know, we did listen, and I, I believe that we were making the right decision for the future of, of Lindley and the community that's coming forward. So I just hope everyone just really thinks about that, you know, about this board, that we do listen, and we listen intently, and that we are not gonna get everything that we want. We really would be setting up children, you know, in a wrong, in a bad way if we said that they are gonna get everything that they ask for and everything that we want. That's just not real, real life happening. So enjoy the rest of your summer and try to stay cool.
Thank you. Ms. Bellby Small?
To the Lindley community and to the community at large, you elect us to make the tough decisions. You elect us hopefully to represent the whole. Because though we are elected from districts, we still make decisions for the whole of GCS. It is, money is a problem. And I implore everybody, as, as much as you fought for Lindley, please go down and, and get your county commissioners to totally fund Guilford County schools. One of them's sitting here, so, so, you know, get him as he's going out the door. I ain't playing, you know? Because we don't have enough money to do what we should be doing. And then, you know, to ask us to, to try to figure out how to, as, as I think one of my colleagues said, we went from a, a $3 million project to a $72 million project, but you get a brand-new school out of it and not just something stuck onto the back of that school that was gonna be hard to maintain. For my three minutes run out. GCS had some, some loss of both staff and students over the past few weeks. And so I hope we will keep those families in, in prayer. I ain't through yet. Heads up for our youth is having their ninth back-to-school rallies on Sunday, August 11, where they'll be giving away backpacks, it'll be at the Coliseum from 3:00 to 5:00. If you're interested in attending, please go to their website and register. Also, I just want to say congratulations to our retirees. I know that we're having a big event for them, and we really appreciate all of the dedication and years. I think at last year's celebration, our superintendent actually added up how many total years all of our retirees had given in, in their time. It was over 6,000, wasn't it? Yeah, you know, so I want to just say congratulations to them. And also congratulations to our late graduates, who I think their graduation is this next. So I'm gonna use all three of my minutes, so you can keep that thing running if you want. But anyway, and thanks to staff for all of your hard work over the summer. Because, see, y'all don't go, y'all, y'all may take vacation, but you're still, you know, working, and we know that, so we appreciate all that you've done. And I got 12 minutes, 12 seconds left. Y'all have a good summer and be safe, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pratt.
I just would like to say congratulations to, to both the, the Irwin community and the Lindley community on being able to get new buildings. I think, you know, it's very exciting to be able to have a fresh, clean slate to the Lindley community. I am sorry that we weren't able to maintain the facade, and I do hope that our, our facilities and operations folks will work really hard to, to do whatever they can to maintain some of that historical value of that building. You know, I can sort of envision taking a bunch of the bricks from the building and making walkways or a courtyard or something like that. I think that would be a nice tribute with what's available. So I know that Dr. Monk and his team will do the best that he can to honor the legacy of the Lindley community. And I hope that everybody across the board is having a fantastic summer. It's hard to believe that we have some schools that are going back in just two weeks, week and a half, something like that, kind of crazy. So end of the summer is here, teachers, staff, everyone who is in that exciting, fun time of year where you're getting to go in and set up your classroom and figure out what exactly the next year is going to hold for you. You know, this is a really exciting time, and I hope that you're able to, to soak in every second of that and that kids are able to soak in every second of the end of summer for them. And we'll be back to school before we know it. So that's all I've got, thank you.
I'm excited for Irwin and Lindley. I mean, I think you're gonna have two gorgeous, beautiful, conducive learning environments that you will love. I also want to say congratulations to our communication team that works so very hard in making us look good and the hours they spend. So congratulations and thank you. And I want to say a big shout-out to our IT team. With the blue screen situation, there was a lot of work. They literally have to go to each site and put a fix in, and it was a major issue. And they worked, they, they're the ones in the back that keep us going. So I want to make sure that they get their due acknowledgement for the hard work they do. And when these situations come, they are invaluable. So thank you.
Celebrating with Grimsley High School, Go Whirlies, these new athletic fields, and a shout-out to new athletic director Evan Fancourt, who's here tonight, and who eyeballed my son the other day at football practice. So thank you so much, Mr. Fancourt, for your leadership, it's good to see you. I also want to speak to the Lindley community and say specifically amidst this project, thank you for the level and the quality of the engagement that we have had. I echo all of those who've said how seriously that has been taken. Celebrate with Lindley and with Irwin, these new projects, the excitement that that gives us for other opportunities within our district. And I would say to all of those who have advocated in such an organized way and a skillful way and a compelling way for the preservation of Lindley Elementary and then for the preservation of the facade, that while the outcome tonight was not what you have worked so hard for, I do want you to know that you were heard. I do want you to know that your efforts make an impact. And when I hear our staff and we as a board talking about our commitment to preserve the look and feel, to integrate with the built environment, to make sure that architecturally there is a seamless transition to the new community, that is because of how much you foregrounded that and how much you brought that to our attention in such a compelling way. And so know that your efforts do matter even as they have not yielded the outcome that might have been hoped for. Lastly, I will say that it was a pleasure to attend with some fellow board members and others in our community, the 64th anniversary commemorative event for the A&amp;T Four and the Sit-In Movement here in Greensboro that Dr. King himself called the second wind of the civil rights movement in the American South, and the celebration of the International Civil Rights Center and Museum at Cory this last Saturday. And I would just highlight that among those honored, it was a thrill to see two who have been such champions for education. Yvonne Lyons Cooper-Revel was honored as a Sit-In participant, and Mrs. Cooper-Revel had a long history as an educator here and continues to be an inspiration. And it was great to celebrate with Ms. Doris Dot Kearns, longtime leader and advocate in our community. And I would just quote Mrs. Cooper-Revel, who was reflecting on her childhood growing up in Greensboro, which led her to, been at college and ultimately to be a participant in the Sit-In Movement. And she said, "Growing up, we saw the injustice around us, and we just thought that's how it was supposed to be. So let us keep our eyes open, let us be wakeful and watchful for those things, and let us be disturbed to continue to advocate for what is right and just and true." And that concludes my three minutes, and I will use, just to be petty, every single second.
We are sure you would do that. Thank you so much. First of all, thanks to the Irwin and Lindley parents, friends, and neighbors. I want you to know that we receive your texts, your emails, and your calls, and we definitely listen to you. And congratulation on your new school. Dr. Oakley, visitor, staff, thank you very much for the opportunity to present for you this evening. And to Jeff Foster, Brandon Rennick, and Sher Harrison, we are doing our last STEM program for middle school and high school females at the Core Technology on Lee Street, and that is a free activity for them. To Dr. Tor Kennedy, I thank you, and she is a new principal at Van Delle. I thank her for the opportunity to visit with her and to spend some time with her and talk about the needs of the school and the needs of the students. Dudley High School had a fabulous consolidation reunion last weekend. The Panthers were here from all across the nation, and they had an awesome time. And we thank them for pouring funds into the city of Greensboro while they was here, and they returned home safely. Last but not least, please remember the families in your prayers, and that it's the three students ages 14 through 15, which is our students, our babies, Kenya Rush Saxton, Brandon Bowie, and also Darian LaGranne. Please remember the families and the school families and the biological families in your prayers. And that, I said, please give me a motion to adjourn. Thank you very much, good night.